Katie, you all set?
All set. We are recording.
Great. Good evening. My name is Peter Basserman. I'm chairman of the Bramford Inland Wetland Commission. I'll now open the commission's regular meeting. It is August 14th, 2025, and it is 7 o'clock. Today's meeting will be conducted as a virtual meeting using the Zoom software platform. It's being held in accordance with Connecticut Public Act 22-3. And the information for tonight's meeting is available on the town's website. The final agenda is also on the town's website or at the town hall for inspection. Any changes this evening to the agenda from staff?
No changes.
Braper Community Television is recording this evening. Thankful for their participation and service to the community. For those speaking tonight, make sure that your face is visible when recording. Also, to ensure accurate and complete discussion, yeah, record of discussion. Each time a statement is made, please indicate your, your name before articulating any comment. This applies to any party wishing to participate. And you can use the raise your hand feature when it's open for comment to make such comments. Let's see, we'll take our customary roll call at this point. Commissioner Goklowski.
Commissioner Goklowski, present.
Commissioner Boda.
Commissioner Boda, present.
Commissioner Papantonis.
Commissioner Papantonis, present.
Commissioner Begum. Commissioner Begum. You're muted, Commissioner. Now you're invisible. Commissioner Begum, one more time. Let's see, we'll add Commissioner Begum when she joins us. Staff, Jamie Frederick.
Present.
And Katie Blanchett.
Present.
Okay, we have enough for a quorum this evening. All the commissioners present are seated and can vote. Is there any commissioner regarding tonight's agenda that needs to recuse themselves from any of the items on the agenda? Hearing none, we'll move on to the minutes of July 24th, which was a regular meeting of the commission. Again, the minutes are available on the town's website for inspection. Is there a motion to approve those minutes?
Commissioner Papantonis will make a motion to approve the minutes.
That's great. Is there a second?
Commissioner Goklowski, I'll second this.
That's great. Note at this time, Commissioner Begum has joined us. Is there any disagreement on the minutes as presented? Hearing none, all in favor of approving the minutes of July 24th, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any abstentions? Any opposed? Okay, first item on the agenda this evening. We have an application for review inland wetland 250704, 114 Clark Avenue. Landscaping retaining wall and plantings. Additional information has been included in the record since our last meeting. Jamie, can you frame where we're at on this application?
Jamie Frederick and the wetland agent. So yeah, the commission had requested stormwater calculation, essentially demonstration that the water quality volume was being retained on site in some way, and also a planting plan. So we have received revised stormwater calculations. They're now proposing a swell at the bottom of the retaining wall that according to the calculations handles more than the water quality volume. And we've, I'm pretty sure he said this, received a planting plan. The other thing I wanted to identify is that I did advise that they change the stormwater calculations to kind of align with what the commission typically sees using the 24-hour storm event rather than a five-minute storm event. So in case anyone noticed, the numbers changed a lot. That is in part why.
Is there an opportunity, I guess, this evening for someone to just review the data that was presented from the applicant? Do we have somebody on this call for 114 Clark Avenue?
Yeah, this is Ryan. This is Ryan Thompson. Sorry, I didn't know how to unmute from my phone. I happened to just take this call from my car. I'm the engineer and the land surveyor. I was at the last meeting and I reviewed the, the survey and the, the report that was asked previously after the meeting last month. As Jamie indicated, the commission requested a little bit more information. So I did update the stormwater management calculations using a 24-hour storm event. NOAA Atlas 14, which I had used NOAA Atlas 14 data initially, but I had used the five-minute duration. And I had, I had done so because a five-minute duration storm will provide a much more intense storm, which will create a larger runoff rate. So that was the intent of that. But when you look at the 24-hour storm, it is a significantly smaller, you know, significantly less intense storm, which results in a significantly less runoff volume, a rate of volume. So, but it does obviously provide, you know, a, a, a slightly larger total volume of runoff. So those calculations that you see there incorporate that. That said, I also was asked to do the water quality volume based on, on, you know, the requirements. And it came out to, I believe it's 27, 28 cubic feet. And so this, and I was on vacation last week when asked to put together this swell, so I, I hand drew it. I will update the plan with a, a CAD, you know, a, a professional drawing showing this same information here. But for the purposes of this meeting, this is the intent of what the swell will look like. That will accommodate the water quality volume with 28 cubic feet or 27, whatever it is. I believe it's 27. And, and you can see the geometry of this well. It's essentially, it's basically six inches deep. It's a foot wide at the base. And, you know, roughly, roughly two feet wide at the top, which will allow for storage of about 45 cubic, 30 feet long, or about 35 feet, 45 cubic feet of water runoff, which is almost, you know, almost double what's required. And then it would essentially infiltrate into the ground or sheet flow over the, the, the ground, the existing ground into the existing wetland. So those are the updates and I'm more than happy to answer. Those are the updates that I did. I know that the, you know, the homeowner also provided a planting plan. I will, I will answer any questions that you have of this and the calculations. And then I would defer to Ms. Dufour to go over the planting plan.
Jamie Frederick and the wetland agent, any questions on the stormwater before I switch over to the planting plan?
Um, this is Commissioner Boda. Just, Mr. Thompson, would you reiterate? You said that the, the five-minute calculation, did you say that it enables you to better identify in more intense duration?
Yeah, so the five-minute, the five-minute storm event, the five-minute duration storm, you know, in, in each of the, in each of the various categories, a two-year, 10-year, 100-year, 500-year, is a far more intense storm event. Meaning, you know, some, for example, and I don't have it in front of me, but I believe the, the, the 10-year storm is, is about seven inches per hour versus the 24-hour storm, which is, I think it's like 0.3 inches per hour. It's, and I, yeah, I'm sorry, I'm on my phone, so it's, so. Where is the, yeah, 0.34 inches per hour is the 24-hour duration 100-year storm. So significantly less intense. And this is straight from NOAA Atlas 14, you know, you can look it up on the website. That, that is that. So what I had done previously was I used the five-minute duration storm because you're looking at, you know, seven to 10 inches per hour in a very short, intense burst, which is what I had, you know, previously proposed or previously, you know, shown. But at the, at the request of Jamie, I updated these, these calculations to be in line with, I guess, what you, you, you know, you folks look there, look for more, more often. And so that's where the 0.34 inches per hour comes from.
Thank you.
Essentially, yeah, it said, yeah, yeah, go ahead, sorry, go ahead.
I was, I, I appreciate the, the expansion on the information. And then just one follow-up question. In your experience, are there other municipalities that are using these five-minute duration for, in their regs?
I mean, it just, it just depends on what you're trying to solve for. So, so, so yes, the, to simply answer your question, there are other municipalities that are using a five-minute duration storm. So I, I want to clarify because it depends on what you, what you really want to get at. If you're looking at total volume, right, total actual collected water that, that accumulates, obviously a longer duration 24-hour storm event will result in a larger total volume of water that's collected over the drainage area. And what happens to that, whether it gets infiltrated, whether it runs off, whether it ponds into a wetland area, and then later down, you know, it goes downstream, whether it gets absorbed into the plant life or evaporated, that's all, that's all not really considered in that total volume for a longer duration storm. However, if you want to know what is the most, you know, damaging in terms of erosion velocity, you know, flow, like volumetric flow of the, of the water, a shorter duration, more intense storm will give you that value. So, so if you have seven inches per hour, it's collecting in five minutes, and it's all got to go, you know, time of concentration is whatever, five or 10 minutes, and it's all accumulating into a channelized flow. And, and in the case, what I had done before, I was looking specifically at the flow around the wall, the flow, you know, through the wall, going into that wetlands, erosion capabilities, whether it was bringing any sediment. That shorter duration, more intense storm is going to give you a much better understanding of what the velocities in the, in the, in the total water going through in a very short but very intense timeframe will look like. So, so the answer is, it depends on what you really want to analyze, which one you should use. And, you know, that's why I used the more intense storm previously. Just want to make sure that's clear. You know, I was trying to be, I guess, more conservative. And, and ultimately, you know, what you have in that case, you know, I mentioned before, you had about, you know, eight or nine garden hoses worth of, of, of flow, you know, in terms of, 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 you know, volume over time going through that area into the wetlands. With this updated, you know, calculation and you have the total volume, it, it ends up coming out to, so the 25 or 28 cubic feet of water quality volume is based on the first 1.3 inches, which is from the, you know, the, the, the stormwater manual there. But when you analyze it for a 100-year storm, it ends up being, I don't remember, I think it's ended up being something 200 or something, total cubic yards that goes into the actual wetland. That's not the water quality volume. That's the total volume from the rainfall event. And so that, just to put it in perspective, is about the, the amount of water that would fill up. So this would be in addition, this would be the, the runoff addition after the emplacement of the wall that, that's in question and the landscaping. This is what's added to the runoff volume from, between pre-development and post-development going into the wetland. And that's what I had mentioned before, there is an increase in volume. But that 200 or whatever, you know, total cubic feet that, that I calculated, that equates to about the size of a small child swimming pool that you would buy at, say, you know, Big Lots or something, maybe an eight-foot diameter swimming pool filled up about a foot and a half or so. That's, that's about the, the amount of water that's increased in the 100-year storm using these calculations. I, I, I just want to make sure that I, like, I'm not trying to, you know, do a, a lesson here. I just, I just want to make sure that I'm clear in, in explaining what we're looking at coming off this property. I hope that, I hope that helps.
It did. Thank you very much.
This is Commissioner Basserman. To continue in the teaching environment, are we, is the only variable here time, the five minutes versus the 24-hour? Is the volume that's being considered the same? Or do we have more than time as a variable in the calculation?
Well, it's, it's, it's not just one variable, it's multi-variable. So, so the, the equation is, is for flow, for, for Q, all right, is equals CIA, C being the runoff coefficient, which is based on the type of, of ground. And so that's one of the variables. And that, that changes between pre-development and post-development. So pre-development, oh, and that's, that's another thing. I had used a much more conservative pre-development or post-development runoff coefficient. But using the, you know, the, the guidance from, from, on the commission, I actually end up resulting in a much lower post-development runoff coefficient. So the higher the runoff coefficient, the higher the volume. But it's also CIA, so coefficient I being intensity and an A being area. Well, the area stays the same between the two. So that, that's, that's, that's the only variable that doesn't change. Intensity, well theoretically, you want to establish the same intensity in pre- and post-development to analyze it. So, you know, I, I had again, used the five-minute duration storm. Now we're using 24-hour storm, so that intensity changes. But, but, so those are the different variables. But to, to simplify, the, the total volume is a, you know, is a function of how many acres times how intense and how many hours, right? So if you, if you have a, let's say a 10 minutes or 10 inches per hour storm, which would be a very intense storm, but it only lasted an hour, right? It would be 10 inches. And then you multiply that over the area, whatever it is, if it's an acre. So, you know, it's, it'd be about 0.8 acre feet or whatever that turns out to be in terms of cubic feet. But if you have a 24-hour storm, that, you know, and it's a 0.34 inches per hour times 24, whatever that math is, I think it comes out there on six, six or seven, you know, inches over that same, let's say it's one acre, and well, now you have closer to half an acre foot. So you, you would have a lower volume of total water in the 24-hour event than you would in, let's say, a one-hour event. Obviously, a five-minute event would be a significantly less total number of, of volume because it's, it's a less amount of time. But then you would, you know, whatever the intensity is, you'd have to multiply that.
Would, would the, would the intensity vary over that 100-year storm period? Pardon me, over the 24-hour period?
Well, I mean.
Or do you hold that constant over that 24-hour period?
You use the value provided by NOAA Atlas 14. So, 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 short answer is, you, you use the value that's provided. True, honest, you know, mathematical grad school level answer is, is, yeah, the intensity does change, of course, over that period of time. But what they do, what they do is they take, they take the average and it's based on, you know, I could, I, I would encourage you to, to look at, yeah, yeah, sir.
Jamie Frederick and the wetland agent, I can send out a little bit of information to commissioners if they're interested in looking at it. And if you have any questions, I can try and give you the, the, the non-engineer response. And maybe we can ask for, for a general lesson from, from the town engineer, perhaps, if he's listening to this. I'm sure he's happy to hear that. Um, but yeah, so, so long story short on my end, I just want to say, I don't think there was anything wrong with him using the five-minute intensity. I just know that we usually get the 24-hour intensity, so I, or 24-hour period. So I figured it would be more comparable to what the commission's used to seeing. Also, I did look it up in the stormwater quality manual to make sure I wasn't going completely off book by suggesting that maybe he used the 24-hour instead. And the revised stormwater quality manual does, in fact, in the beginning, chapter one, they kind of bullet point the updates that they made. And one of them is update of design storm precipitation to incorporate available precipitation frequency data for Connecticut for more resilient stormwater management design. This includes updates to the stormwater, updates to design storm precipitation for stormwater quality control NOAA Atlas 14, and an updated water quality design storm 90th percentile 24-hour rainfall based on updated rainfall data for Connecticut as of the development of this manual. And in the manual, they kind of include the backstory of how that 90th percentile 24-hour rainfall is determined, which speaks to the question that Chairman Basserman had about, does the intensity vary over the duration of the storm? Basically, they're taking an average of a bunch of data and they came up with a number to represent typical expected storm for Connecticut.
Any other questions for Mr. Thompson? All right, we had a planting plan update as well. We have somebody to speak to that?
Jamie Frederick and the wetland agent, I'll kind of set the scene and then let the property owner fill in. So this is the retaining wall, stuff splitting down to the lower area, the off-site in the wetland is located. Pretty much just off of where the edge of the, the image is. So there's some existing, I believe, arborvitae and cedar and/or spruce. And they're looking to infill with a couple of plants. It's not a very large area, so I, I don't know that it would be, I don't know that you could fit more plants in here than what's already being proposed. And then for a list of species she provided, she wants to do three dwarf fruit trees. And then the rest are native mountain laurel, sweet fire, Virginia sweet fire, vibranium, lantago and clattero. And then I'm going to jump back to the general site plan real quick. So again, here's the retaining wall, those stairs, the existing plants, the arborvitae, the two cedar trees, and there is also, I think, two mature trees here as well. And then there's some raised planters on the up, at the top of the retaining wall, if you will.
Here comes that five-minute storm.
Uh, this is Commissioner Boda. I just was curious about the inclusion of the Bartlett pear. If I am recalling correctly, you know, like you said, they're, it's not, they're not native, but I, I think the other issue is that they tend to get some kind of common lighter bacteria that requires a lot of treatment. And I'm just curious about that choice, if there's a better choice that can be made for that area. Another fruit tree that perhaps is less susceptible to things that require chemical application.
We have someone on the call that can address the concern raised by Commissioner Boda regarding the pear trees?
I, I know, I know Ms., I'm sorry, Sir Ryan Thompson, I know Ms. Dufour is, was on the call. And I'm, I'm not really qualified to speak to it. But if, if she's unable to talk, I would, on her behalf, I would say that, that I'm, I'm certain that she will, yeah, I know that she wants to, you know, get this approved and move forward. And she would make any suggestions or changes to, to the planting plan that the commission would request. So if the, the commission doesn't want to use the pear plant, I, I'm certain she would be willing to swap it out with a, a different plant, probably one of those same that's on the list. I don't want to speak for her because I, I am not, you know, the qualified person with the planting plan, but I do know that that is what she's relating to me.
Jamie Frederick and the wetland agent, I have pressed the button, asking Rose to unmute a couple of times. I'm not sure if she's able to. Rose, if you're able to type into the chat and you want to let us know if you have a response, that would also work. As far as unmuting. Or a shortcut, you can probably, if you're on a Windows, click Alt-Y. Or if you're on a Mac, Option-Y to unmute if you're having a hard time unmuting. While we're waiting to see if she can unmute, I will just mention, I, I feel that the property owner has expressed very similar to, to myself as well. I don't think that she would want to get hung up on this one plant and would be willing to take any concerns the commission has into consideration.
Any other questions from the commission regarding the planting plan, either the number or the type of species suggested?
Commissioner Papantonis, I, I would just agree with Commissioner Boda and Commissioner, I think Begum said something else about the Bartlett pear.
There is a staff report for this, this item. It may be appropriate at this point because we can deal with the plant to the extent that this looks to move forward with maybe a condition. Jamie, you want to just quickly take us through the staff report?
Sure. Jamie Frederick and the wetland agent. So I think as I briefly touched on before, a permit was received in 2013 for the construction of the house. These applications respond to a notice violation that was issued in regards to the retaining wall. There's no erosion controls shown on the site plan. I have a comment about that later. A stormwater plan was submitted August 6th via email. Calculated water quality bond 28 cubic feet proposed well provides 40 feet, 45 cubic feet of onsite storage. I did, one point that I think we might want to ask for clarification, which relates back to the erosion control concern, is what the surface of the swell is going to be? Is it going to be lined with stone or is it going to be grass? Knowing that the property owner seeming to have a problem with her microphone, I will mention that I did talk with her briefly this afternoon and she said she was looking to have grass. She's trying to minimize the amount of stone on site, so. So with that in mind, I said that the commission probably want to see some sort of erosion control, like a straw wattle or something, just to make sure there's no movement of that soil, um, while that grass is establishing. Um, and I do have a possible condition for consideration that might address that if it's satisfactory to the commission. Uh, landscaping, we just went over the landscape plan, um. So possible conditions for consideration I had drafted include erosion control if warranted per, erosion control inspection if warranted per condition two, plantings inspection, stormwater inspection, and final inspection. Uh, number two is to minimize sediment and erosion control concerns. All work shall, work associated with the swale shall be conducted during a dry window of no rainfall. If this is not feasible, sediment and erosion controls shall be installed down slope of the swale to the satisfaction of the inland land's duly authorized agent. Um, earlier, the engineer represented that he would be willing to provide an updated, um, formal drawing for the stormwater. So if the commission thought it was appropriate, you could, uh, perhaps revise condition two to state a revised plan shall be submitted showing, um, formal drawing of the stormwater plan and erosion controls to the satisfaction of the duly authorized agent. Um, condition three is planting shall be mulch with a natural woody mulch at time of planting to assist with water retention and ground stabilization. Or any changes to plant species shall be approved by the inland land's duly authorized agent. Any changes to the native plants selected shall be replaced with a native plant species. No invasive plants shall be planted, um, potentially could modify that to also address the Bartlett pear. Uh, and number five is planting shall be monitored for three years to ensure at least eighty-five percent survival. And six, I was kind of on the fence on this one, but I figured I'd throw it in for you guys to consider. Certification from the project engineer that stormwater management has been installed in compliance with the plan submitted August sixth, twenty twenty-five. If we're leaving that in, it should say certification shall be submitted from project or something like that. And then standard conditions and general provisions of all permits.
This is Commissioner Baseman. Jamie, is item six something particular for this application, or is that something that we should be considering for all applications?
Yeah, Jamie Frederick and the Wetland Agent. It's, it's something we typically require. A lot of times we'll require it through the ASBIL and require that it shows the stormwater. I don't know that we need a, a whole new ASBIL for this project. Um, as indicated, the swale is pretty standard dimensions, so I don't know if the commission is satisfied with me doing an inspection rather than making the homeowner have the engineer come back out after the work has been done. Um,
Thank you.
Jamie, Commissioner Gokulowski, um, if I remember correctly, the property owner's been very receptive and very cooperative with this whole scenario. Am I correct?
Jamie Frederick and the Wetland Agent, yes, the, the property owner is very responsive and has, um, you know, been working with me and asking questions along the way.
Okay. All right. Thank you. This is Commissioner Gokulowski again. I don't know how the other commissioners feel, but I, based on all the information that we received this evening, based on the staff report, um, I personally don't see a problem moving forward. And I'm not, if I have any.
I smell a motion here.
Well, I, 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 I want to have my other, I want to make sure my other commissioners are on board before we start that process. You know, Commissioner Boda has been a little quiet and, um, and I could see the smile on her face, so she's been receptive about a few things. So I'm not sure, so. But I did, they've done everything we've asked them to do in a very, very quick time period. So I, I, and we're running out of planting season too, so.
So why don't you go ahead and make the motion and, and we'll find out if everyone's on board or not.
Okay, let's see if I can do this. Inland Wetlands, twenty-five oh seven oh five four, uh, one, fourteen Clark Avenue, Bradford. As stated in the application, um, in the staff report, I, all the conditions should be met, plus the staff report dated eight fourteen twenty twenty-five, and, uh, in a copy of the revised stormwater plan to be submitted to, uh, the inland wetlands office prior to commencement, commencement of any work.
Is there a second out there?
This is Commissioner Boda. I'll, I'll second, and then, um, we need to vote, well, no, and then, um, make a, that was really nice, uh, Commissioner Gokulowski, and I think we just, there was a couple other conditions we wanted to clarify. Can I go ahead and make that friendly, um, amendment?
Sounds good to me.
Um, so we also, the planting plan should be revised to, um, uh, find a more suitable planting than the Bartlett pear to be reviewed by, um, staff, town staff. And, um, oh, that was the second one. No, it's gone.
I think it was the plan.
The CAD will be submitted, um, in place of the hand drawing to staff. And actually, for number five, um, the plantings shall be monitored and reports shall be submitted annually, um, ensuring at least eighty-five percent survival. Um, we typically have three to five years. So I think I would, um, suggest that we have three to five, three to no more than five years. I think that's it.
Jamie Frederick and the Wetland Agent, just a point of clarification. So planting shall be monitored annually for three to no more than five years to ensure at least eighty-five percent survival?
Yeah.
Is that amendment, uh, acceptable, Commissioner Gokulowski?
Yes.
Did we miss anything?
This is Commissioner Begaman. I don't know if we need the project engineer to come back and certify it. As Jamie suggested, she might be able to do that first. She would be able to do that herself, given it, it's a swale and there's the plant. That would be, that would need to be a change if people agree to.
This is Commissioner Baseman. Commissioner Begaman, would you provide the words for item six instead of what's on there then?
Um, I, I don't know, I, I, I hear you, and I also, this is Commissioner Boda, I, I feel like stuff has been, um, written in a plan and then it's not, eh, done to meet those specifications, um, and I don't want to put that additional work on Jamie and Katie when it can be done by the project engineer.
This is Commissioner Begaman. I, I understand that. That's fine.
Any other suggestions before we take the vote?
And before we take the vote, if, uh, the person that, if, um, Gokulowski and Boda can indicate whether they accept those amendments.
Oh, I accepted all the amendments.
I thought we did that.
Okay, sorry, I missed it.
No problem. Just one other thing before we, um, take the vote, is, is the property owner still not, uh, uh, is, is still muted?
Well, there's a motion on the table, so we can't really hear from the property.
I just want to see if she is muted or not. Yep, okay. Yep, she's still muted. All right, we'll take a vote. Commissioner Gokulowski.
Commissioner Gokulowski, aye.
Commissioner Boda.
Commissioner Boda, aye.
Commissioner Papantonis.
Commissioner Papantonis, aye.
Commissioner Begaman.
Commissioner Begaman, aye.
Commissioner Baseman, aye. Uh, okay, we're on the item fi-, uh, pardon me, yeah, five. Uh, enforcement, the notice of violation for one fourteen Clark Avenue regarding the construction of a retaining wall without a permit from the agency. And I guess, uh, we have to formally close this one out, Jamie?
Uh, Jamie Frederick and the Wetland Agent, yeah, I'd be my recommend to close it. I think we can just have a general consensus from the commission on if there's permit in place. Um, anyone have any outstanding concerns that you feel need to be addressed?
Nope.
This is Commissioner Baseman. I assume that the, uh, application that we just reviewed satisfied all of the issues raised in the NOV?
Jamie Frederick and the Wetland Agent, I believe it does. It, it reviews the activities that have occurred and activities that are to occur.
Okay. General consensus, is there anybody opposed to, uh, closing out NOV for one fourteen Clark Avenue? Hearing none, we moved item six. Jurisdictional ruling request, jurisdictional ruling twenty-five oh eight oh one, seventy-one Midwood Road, removal of Japanese knotweed and selective cutting of green briar in and adjacent to the wetland. We need help on this one, Jamie.
Jamie Frederick and the Wetland Agent, so, um, this property might sound slightly familiar. Um, property owner was before the commission recently, and we had kind of discussed that she might have some future projects and want to, uh, that might need review by the agency. So at this point, um, the property owner is looking to manage Japanese knotweed on the property. And again, I'm just going to give a quick introduction and then we'll hand it over to the applicant for the property owner to clarify and fill in. But she's looking to manage Japanese knotweed on the property, and in doing that, there's some green briar that's growing in the same area. So she wants to manage the green briar to the extent that she would need to, to be able to access the knotweed. Um, so some of this is located in the wetland, uh, so, and I felt that it probably would fall in the, um, jurisdictional ruling world, so, um, I, I had her fill out a jurisdictional ruling request. Um, so, uh, I don't know if everyone had a chance to read through the project narrative. Um, initially, the, the, or the property owner had submitted a sign-off request, and I told her to, to move it over to the jurisdictional ruling, in case anyone's wondering why the sign-off request is in there as well. Um, she indicates the methods of removal, manual cutting, using hand tools, um, no heavy machinery, soil excretion, or root pulling. And she provides a map of where she's proposing to do this activity. Um, I'll just screenshot that real quick. So, um, with the map up, I guess I would hand it over to, uh, the property owner to provide any other information you think might be relevant for the commission to consider in regards to your, um, jurisdictional ruling request and/or anything you want to clarify from what I've said.
I don't know what else you'd need to know. So I'll answer any questions you have. I'm sorry, it's Lorraine Esposito, seventy-one Midwood.
Uh, I, I don't see, this is Commissioner Baseman, I don't see, I guess, on the map that I'm looking at, uh, the distinction between the yellow line and the, I don't know, pink line?
The yellow line indicates where the green briar is noticed, and the red lines indicate where the Japanese knotweed is. I'm sorry, it's Lorraine Esposito. I got to get used to that. Sorry.
Um, Ms. Esposito, this is Commissioner Boda. Um, are you, um, after the, the removal, how are you envisioning that to revegetate? Are you planning to rely on pass seed bank? Are you thinking to do um, plantings in the area?
It's Lorraine Esposito. I am absolutely looking to make this a beautiful area. I have, uh, I think it is already outstanding, but the Japanese knotweed is overtaking everything. So my plan is to first remove this very invasive plant and the green briar, so I can move around there, and then understand what my options are once the area is free from this invasive plant. I have every intention of hiring a landscaper that is familiar with the wetlands to make sure that whatever I do, not only is beautiful to look at, but it is of great quality to the ecosystem that supports all the beauty that I enjoy.
Thank you.
This is Commissioner Baseman. How close, um, uh, what's the timeframe between the removal and the, and the planting?
I think it's going to take some time for the knotweed to be exhausted. Since I don't want to use chemicals or uproot the soil and remove the, the roots, it's going to take some time for the exhaustion to set in. So I, I, I'm anticipating that to be two seasons, perhaps. There are other issues that are in play, uh, regarding this area for this stormwater culvert that is distributing water into that area that need to be resolved before I can have a clear understanding of what I am left with and what I can, uh, fee, what I can, uh, envision for the space. So I don't have an exact answer, but it is not in the immediate future that I can tell you.
Um, so this is Commissioner Boda. I'm looking at, um, four point two in our regulations, and also reflecting on, um, past, past practice. Um, the, the commission has been favorable to the purposeful and thoughtful removal of invasives, as well as the restoration of, um, properly functioning wetland ecosystems. Um, and so I, I would just say that under four point two A, conservation of soil, vegetation, water, fish, shellfish, and wildlife, that, um, this request specifically for removal of, um, knotweed and barberry, um, would be a, um, an as-of-right activity, and that the property owner, um, should return with any, um, future plans once, um, the removal has been successful to the point where she is ready to go forward with a, with a planting plan. That should come back to the commission for another review, um, to ensure that it isn't as of right activity, because it is still in line with four point two A.
Uh, Jamie Frederick and the Wetland Agent, I just want to clarify, uh, it's green briar vines, not, uh, barberries. Uh, which is native, but can be considered a nuisance plant and does overgrow other things. So I think the selective cutting, um, rather than complete eradication is not necessarily going to have any sort of detrimental impact.
This is Commissioner Baseman. Any commissioner feel that, um, this is at least the removal of the two noted, uh, invasives, um, uh, anyone feel that that is not an as-of-right? This is Commissioner Baserman, does the homeowner have any problem with coming back to the commission with the planting plan for the for the new activity?
None. Sorry, Lorraine Esposito, none.
This is Commissioner Goklowski. My question for the property owner, Ms. Esposito. You're saying you're looking at possibly two two seasons of planting to complete this project?
Lorraine Esposito, no. Yes and no. I'm looking at two seasons to ensure that I have, I have at least tired out the root systems of these invasive plants before I can understand what I'm left with and what could be the best enhancement for the area once I have eradicated those invasive plants. And I have no problem and I welcome, actually, coming back to the commission to make sure whatever I've planned will be sustainable and actually benefit the ecosystem.
This is Commissioner Goklowski, I believe the property owner has all the best intentions in the world. And I don't have a problem and I'm hoping the rest of the commission doesn't have a problem to allow Jamie to monitor this situation moving forward. And if a situation should arise, that she just make us aware of a situation if it should occur. But I don't think a situation's going to occur.
Jamie Frederick and the Wetland Agent, just to clarify, if it's as-of-right, that means it's as-of-right and there's no inspections required. That said, if the property owner wants to meet or has any questions or concerns or wants to discuss other things, I'm more than happy to have conversations.
This is Lorraine Esposito, and the door's always been open and inviting, so I make use of it and be careful what you offer.
This is Commissioner Baserman, Jamie, is this good to go or do we need a vote?
Typically, we do a vote.
Okay, Commissioner Boda. Oh wait, we need a motion.
We need.
I may, I, yeah.
Anyone want a second?
You want to use what I said before?
I mean technically, it should be made now, I guess.
I'll give you the motion.
Yeah.
Okay, I will make a motion that JR 250801, 71 Midwood Road request, judicial ruling request be identified as an as-of-right activity in line with 4.2A Conservation of Soil, Vegetation, Water, Fish, Shellfish, and Wildlife. And that the property owner should return for any future work as this jurisdictional ruling applies specifically to the knotweed and green briar outlined in the request.
Yeah, Commissioner Goklowski, I'll second that motion.
Any further discussion? Okay, we'll take a vote, Commissioner Papantonis.
Commissioner Papantonis, aye.
Commissioner Goklowski.
Commissioner Goklowski, aye.
Commissioner Begum.
Commissioner Begum.
Commissioner Boda.
Commissioner Boda, aye.
Commissioner Baserman, aye. We'll see in a couple of seasons.
You bet, thank you very much.
You got it. Item seven, no applications for receipt. And we have something on other business, I'm gonna hand this over to Jamie who's gonna talk about OpenGov. It may not be what you think.
Jamie Frederick and the Wetland Agent, so yeah, that's true, I guess I didn't really put a lot of context here for commissioners. So OpenGov is a new permitting software that the town is looking to utilize for land use permitting. So building, engineering, planning and zoning in the wetlands. So we've been working at creating the application form in OpenGov because essentially it's a platform that will allow applicants to apply online. So the regulations require that the commission approve the application forms, so I figured make sure you guys are happy with the application form, so I was gonna just quickly run through what we have and any, you know, kind of changes that might be from the paper application form. And I do have kind of, I do have one recommendation for a change that would be applicable to both application forms based on kind of user experience, so.
Jamie, this is Commissioner Boda, are you gonna be able to do those kind of side by side?
Maybe. Let me see, so I have the application form. Put some markup on it, that might be helpful, so. Okay. All right, so if somebody is going to apply for an in-the-wetland application through the website, essentially it'll come to this page and it gives them the option of applying for an in-the-wetlands permit for regulated activity, subdivision slash re-subdivision referral with no regulated activity and a jurisdictional ruling request like the one we just went through. So what I'm gonna do now is I'm gonna hop to the backend, what it looks like for staff, it's not gonna look like this for the applicant or for the public, which essentially the commissioners will view things as members of the public, but it lets us see everything. So on this form, there's two different sides. There's the side that's used by the public and that's anything that's in white here. And then there's other sections that are yellowish with a little lock and those are things that are internal for tracking purposes only. So really, it's kind of the yellow boxes that we're focusing on, but I'll kind of highlight a little bit about what we're tracking internally too, so you guys can be aware of what we're doing.
This is Commissioner Baserman, Jamie, can you just provide a broad context for why we're moving into this environment?
Sure, there's a lot of municipalities that are moving to online permitting. And, you know, with the remote meetings, having everything digital in one place where everyone can view it, it makes a lot of sense. One thing we'll probably want to talk about is paper copies and what the commission is expecting for paper copies moving forward. But it's nice because when somebody applies online, then Katie doesn't have to enter that application into the system because the applicant's done it for us. So that's one benefit from an administrative standpoint. And as you will be able to see from all of the internal side, I think it provides a good framework for tracking the process a lot better, more efficiently. And also the nice thing about it is, I'm gonna jump ahead and show you a screenshot. This is what an application submission looks like to an applicant. So they can see their submission and then on the side, they can see a checklist of where they are in the application process. And I do have a disclaimer early on that that checklist is probably gonna change throughout the process because you know, the commission might not know if they need a public hearing, might not know if they need a peer review, might go to three meetings rather than the default two that I have built in. But it kind of lets them keep up to date with where they are. And then another nice thing about it is if we require a bond, monitoring, those things will also get added to the workflow. So even after they get their permit, they know what they have to do for compliance.
Well, you just, this is Commissioner Baserman, while you mentioned that, Jamie, what about things like the monitoring plan, which is over some extended future period? Is that built into the system so you can track where you're at in that monitoring?
Yes, it's a little it's new territory, so it's built out and hopefully it will work the way we envision it will work.
It's a work in progress.
Yeah, so I'll show that to you briefly as we get to that part. So first and foremost, in the system, in order to submit an application, you have to be a user. So you're already gonna have your user information entered into the system and that's gonna default in as the applicant information. So essentially, this area of our application form would be step one. And if you're the owner, in that section, we ask what or early on, we ask who the applicant is. And if you're the applicant, you're the owner, we're not gonna make you fill out information out yet. So I will, and then step two is where it is. So I will jump back to the software. So this is essentially, every box is a step. So step one, after, you know, creating your user, is what is your role in the application? Are you the owner? Are you the potential buyer, engineer, whatever? And then we do have an other, so then if you select other, this explain role pops up. If you say you're the owner, it'll ask you if there's multiple owners, so you can add the other owner information if applicable. Provide a brief description of the project as shown here. And then occupancy type, that is not something we ask for on the current application, but the reason why we ask for it in the system is for calculating the fee. So basically, if you say it's a residential project, we'll calculate it based on the residential fees. If you say it's a commercial project, it knows to calculate the commercial fees. And then add contacts other than applicant-owner, that relates back to our contact section. And what the system does is it allows you to enter multiple contacts if for whatever reason you've got a lot of people involved in the project that you want to have updated on a routine basis. Property owner information, this only pops up if it's determined to be necessary based on the previous steps. Same with contact person. And then we have our plan information, this is largely the same as what we have on our current application. I did not require fax because I think the only fax is we get our roofing companies and lunch specials. And so I
Are you saying that the town is still paying for fax lines?
It's an email service. And I did add this little help text of a site plan of existing and proposed conditions is required per section 7.7 of the regulations unless waived by the agency or the duly authorized agent. And then we've got the wetland report section, again, by and large, the same as our current application with the little help text and the link to the regulations. That would be this section of our
Commissioner Boda, is the end result that the commission ends up also using this software to get digital access to this information and that we move away from the Dropbox?
Jamie Frederick and the Wetland Agent, yes, that is what we are looking forward to. It will be different. It will be something to get used to, but that is ultimately the goal, so that way we don't have to manage both services and essentially the applicant's gonna be able to upload everything directly to the Dropbox. So if you're checking the record and they submitted revised plans, you'll know. You'll be able to see them.
Jamie. This is, continuing, Commissioner Boda. What is the timeframe for this transition? Is there a specific date that the town would be shifting over? Is it a kind of rollout where we would be getting some information in this database system and some in the Dropbox?
Jamie Frederick and the Wetland Agent, so we're looking to hopefully, if everything goes well, make the transition around mid-September. As far as transition, I expect that we'll still get a decent amount of paper applications that Katie will be entering into the system. Especially due to the nature of commission applications versus, you know, a building permit to re-roof your house. There's just more complexity and attachments and what have you. So I think as far as the phasing, we could kind of look at that as a commission and see what your comfort level is when it goes live and maybe for a month or so, we do it both ways. And or maybe we have, you know, kind of a training session at some point once it's live, so you guys can see how you view it. But ultimately, the goal would be to have everything in one place and not be managing in two places and not have to, you know, if it's in the system, it's part of the record. You don't have to worry about updating other places and making sure they match. So that is the goal and I do have we'll get to attachments in a little bit and how that works.
Jamie, Commissioner Goklowski. I'm sure they, when they were pitching the software, uses of the software, they were talking about actual time-saving issues. What do you feel the savings of time is gonna be for the staff on each particular application?
Good question, so I think they'll certainly be saving of time because the applicant will be answering some of the information. And I think the real time saver is like over the span of the permit review and compliance. Because I think our current system never got built out to fully function for our needs. Basically, we took the building departments program and forced our stuff to fit into it. And so this is really letting us build out steps, checks and balances, essentially, you know, if you don't complete a step, you don't move on to the next step unless for whatever reason it's waived. So I think, and I think it provides a lot more transparency to applicants to understand where they are in the process. And so it's, I think it will be a very useful tool to have moving forward. You know, there's some things we ask about past practice, this is gonna really let us kind of, I think, report better on that and give the actual responses rather than, well typically, yeah, I think yeah, I think, I think, Quentin, Madison.
Alright, so yeah.
You could check, yeah, and I can send out, I know there's one Seco's community that's using it for their wetlands meetings and they have links on their agenda. So I'll send out one of those agendas so that you guys can take a look at how another town's using it and what it looks like on their end. Ours will look different because our form is different, but you'll get an understanding of what the interface is.
Thank you.
This is Commissioner Begum, for the people yeah, for the people doing the paper application. Will they also be required to go and open Gov once Katie has put it into the system? Or are those people gonna be able to continue doing? Are you gonna inceptionally have two systems going for people who do it by paper?
Jamie Frederick and the Wetland Agent, so no, they will be entered into the same system. I would say they'd be encouraged to create a user in login, but they don't have to. So I mean, statutorily, we're still required to mail permits. So if they don't want to look at the system, they don't have to, they can just follow along the process the way we, you know, currently go. And they'll still end up with their permit. But it's a good resource and, you know, I think that a lot of people would be interested in being able to see where they stand with their their application. Yeah. So no, if you're not a computer person, you don't have to have a user.
Great. Great, thanks.
Commissioner Goklowski, now, if, let's say I wanted to go online right now and fill out an application and I fill it out today at 8:11 PM on the 14th, but my application technically is not accepted into the office until tomorrow morning when you open, or does it get accepted to tonight?
You know, that is a good question that I should actually probably follow up with Town Council on to see what his recommendation is as far as receipt dates. Because the way that the application works isn't the application fee doesn't get submitted until after staff reviews the application and confirms the application fee. So even if you submit it at 3 o'clock, you might not get that application fee. I think that you would treat it probably as received once it's been submitted, even though it's Um, I, I think that you would treat it probably as received, once it's been submitted, even though it's incomplete. Um, but I will, I, I will investigate.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm worried about holidays, weekends, you know, that type of stuff, um. I mean, there should be a, uh, stopgap in the system that, you know, if it's submitted on a Friday night, you know, they should have, they should be aware that it's not gonna be technically received by the office to the next actual business day.
Jamie Frederick and my wetland agent, I don't know how much that matters because essentially, as far as timeframes for commission review go, um, applications for receipt, applications are received by the commission uh, at the next regularly scheduled meeting or after thirty-five days, whichever is less, so. Say somebody submitted an application today, it'd be for receipt at our next meeting. If they submitted it yesterday after business hours, then the question becomes, was it, is it for receipt at today's meeting, or would it be for receipt at the next meeting? I think we would probably say that it was for receipt today to be safe, but I will ask town council's guidance for that.
Okay, thank you.
So really, Wednesdays are gonna be our problem days. Okay, so the next section of our application is kind of some of our general information. Uh, total area of the site, total area of disturbance, um, total area of wetland, upland review area disturbance, wetland disturbance and water course disturbance. I mean, all of these required, that's what the little asterisk means. Um, and if, they all have little help boxes to try and help provide context um, for the applicants, they know what they're filling out. And for their, uh, wetland and water course, I request that if it's not applicable to put zero, that way I know they didn't just miss it. And then we're getting into the
Jamie, while I think of it and I don't have a senior moment, forget it, but I assume nothing here, uh, forces us to change the regulations we have?
No, nope. Yeah, so this section and the checkboxes and the zoning really to be pretty much at the bottom part of the first sheet of our application. And in looking at these checkboxes, I cannot tell you how many times I get calls asking, well, which boxes should I check? And I'm like, well, what's the point in having the checkboxes if I'm telling them what they're supposed to be checking? So I would recommend that the commission considers changing clearing to clearing slash vegetation removal. That grading, filling and excavation get lumped together into grading slash earthwork in parentheses, cut slash fill. Um, and then construction drainage and other would remain the same. And a lot of times, I think people get hung up on whether filling means wetland filling or not, and they're like, well, if I'm grading, then I'm obviously exgrating or filling, so, I mean, I think that these checkboxes might be a little bit easier to, to self-identify with as an applicant. And I think they get to the meat of what we're at, we're trying to identify with the current checkboxes. Does anyone have any concerns or feel differently?
Sounds good. Thank you.
Um, real quick, while we're at it, uh, file number, currently we do IW number, two digits for the year, dot, two digits for the month, dot, two digits for the number permit in that month. Um, the system creates a number, it will be slightly different, so, uh, we can have four, basically, it's going to be whatever code we want up to three le- up to four letters, so we could keep it as IW or we could change it to IWWA. Um, and then two digits for the year, so it'd be like twenty-five, and then it would just be a running number of permits, so it would be one, two, three throughout the entire year, rather than sequencing it by month. Wanted to give everyone a heads up on that. And I don't really wanna add another permit number column, because then I think it'll get confusing which, which permit number are we talking about? I think I have more than one permit number for our record. Would just be confusing. Next section of the application is additional information, essentially, check the checkboxes that apply, um. Pretty much the same on the online version, but what I did is, in the system, we have the capability of using location flags and, and parcel flags or manual flags, so uh, essentially, we can flag any parcel that lies within five hundred feet of an adjacent municipality, that lies within the regional water authority watershed, um, that lies within the flood zone. So this isn't a hundred percent going to catch every, well, it will catch everything. It might identify a parcel which it doesn't really pertain to, if it's a large parcel and the project is not within the section of the parcel that intersects. But essentially, I've added, um, no information that pops up if the parcel does intersect with one of these features. Just to kind of help make sure the applicant is aware, um, and to help trigger checking the box if it's applicable. So I have that for the adjacent municipality notice, RWA notice and the floodway. Um, we also have tidal wetlands, uh, which I do not have a location flag for, because I think that's a little bit more open-ended and hard to, we don't have a compreh- as comprehensive of a data set. Um, same with the contains wetland or water course regulated by Army Corps of Engineers, uh, and, and that it requires a Connecticut general permit. Field inspections is just like it is on the application, proof of certified mailing, um, for uh, conservation or preservation restrictions is like it is on the application, I think the wording here is a little bit different. It says, does this, does the area where the activity is proposed have a conservation or preservation restriction? Yes, no. I think we currently have yes, no, not applicable, I'm not really sure what the, if we need the third option, um. And then if, if you say yes, uh, then it will trigger an attachment requirement where you have to upload that proof of mailing. And then also a new thing that I added that's not on our paper application is natural diversity database, and this is another location flag. So if the parcel lies within, or if it intersects with the natural diversity database, which is a, a data set maintained by the state, it triggers this prompt and it says the agency may require NDB be reviewed to be completed. Um, I didn't wanna necessarily require it because I think there's some projects where perhaps the commission wouldn't, but I wanted to put every, I wanted to put the applicant on notice while they were filling out the application form, so they wouldn't be caught off guard. Um, and this also triggers a place for that to be uploaded as well. And this link links to the state's page where they would be able to submit a request or review. Um, so to the question, any questions on the NDB before I move on?
Uh, this is Commissioner Bassman, Jamie, is this, um, uh, sh- list of sheets or, you know, whatever the application is gonna be, is this able to get emailed?
It's not really a printer-friendly format and I can't send out the link, it's a internal staff only um, access on this side. So I could give you a bunch of screenshots, but I don't think anyone wants to look at.
No, 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 no.
Um, so here's our first, uh, internal only checkbox, and this only pops up internally because essentially it's asking, are you staff entering this application? And if you are, you check the box, and what this does is it prevents staff from having to authorize the application, because obviously can't authorize anything. Um, so if you, um, check this box, this box will pop up for the public to see and lets them know that it was entered by staff, so if you wanna see the certification for the application, go and find the app. The paper copy of the application that was scanned and uploaded, um. If you're submitting it, if you are the applicant and you're submitting it, then you'll get this section instead. Uh, well, the section will pop up either way as well, but you get this section and you then have to confirm that you have read and agreed to the information above and sign the application. So these three boxes would not be required if a staff member was entering it. Um, and then the supplemental information is not on the paper application, this is kind of general guidance for the applicant to understand you're not done yet. Um, so it says you'll be required to submit support, supporting documentation for your application. Some documentation will be required at time of submission, additional information may be required based on the regulations and review process. To help keep files orderly, please let IW staff know if you have revised or supplemental materials to submit so they can provide access to upload additional materials to the appropriate locations. Note that the workflow for your application will change over time, additional steps are likely to be added throughout the review process. Contact the IWWA office if you have any questions or concerns. If you're logged in as the applicant, supporting documents can be viewed in the attachments tab located in the menu on the top left of your screen. If you are not the applicant, supporting documentation for this application can be viewed in the files tab located near the top of this page. So this will be shown from the public view, um. There was kind of no way of giving this information to the applicant out it being on the public view page, so I tried to tailor it so that it would kind of make sense for both. So I'm gonna kind of stop here, because that's the end of what the applicant does. Um, and I'm gonna pop over to attachments, and it's gonna look like a lot, because we have a lot, and they, they come up as they're relevant. So authorizations comes up if the applicant is not the owner, um, or if multiple owners have been indicated, and so that's where they would be able to upload their authorization. That's also where we as staff, if we upload an application, we'll put the paper copy of the application there with the signature from the applicant. Um, that's required if the applicant is not the owner, so they will not be able to submit their application without providing that information. Same with the site plan, um, they have to submit something. Um, so there's a bit of information here about, um, and this, if the commission wants, I can send this out, I think, as a, a printout, if you wanna be able to look at these, I call them buckets, um, and provide feedback, I could send that out, um.
Before we go any further, is there any part of these attachments that you need the commission to weigh in on a change that you're looking to make?
Um, I don't think so, because this isn't the actual application form, this is kind of application management, I think, at this point. Um, so I guess before we go through this, does anyone, do we wanna go back to the application form or keep going?
From my standpoint, if in fact you could send this out and the commission can view this, um, you know, uh, on their own time, uh, and, and not necessarily tie up, uh, time now, maybe that would be a preferred, um, choice.
Yeah, so I'll send, I'll send that out and a link to another municipality, so you can see how theirs works with the attachments. Essentially, anything that gets uploaded kind of gets uploaded to these locations, and if a second document is uploaded to that location, it kind of supersedes, it adds versions. So you'll have all of the site plans, hopefully will be added to the site plan folder. So if you click on site plans, the most recent one will pop up, but you'll also be able to see that there is, you know, three previous versions or whatever, hopefully there wasn't, because that's a lot of versions. So, yeah, I, I
While I think of it, just another thought just popped into my head, Commissioner Bassman. What about for very large projects where, um, to get information, um, you know, on a, on a, a screen is very demanding in terms of being able to see everything, uh, what do we do about large paper copies?
Yeah, so I, I think for commission review projects, we're gonna want probably two paper copies, um. It's, it's nice at the end of the review to have two copies, one file copy, one field copy. And it's nice during the review to have two copies, so that I can be reviewing your copy and I can give a copy to the town engineer to review. Um, and then, of course, if any commissioners want paper copies of the site plan, we still have the ability to require reduced size paper copies. So I would probably add that into the form under the supplemental information area. Um, and just say, note, you will be required to submit two full-size copies of the plan and X reduced size copies unless unless informed otherwise by the duly authorization. Because on a, um, the minimalist project, I wouldn't necessarily require copies, just waste paper.
Okay.
I think currently we have three commissioners that request paper copies. Uh, we can also do that offline, though, we can, I can send out a poll and ask people if they want paper copies as part of that email with the examples and our attachment locations.
Jamie, how much time have you had to look at, Commissioner Goklowski, how much time have you had to look, to review this system since they dumped it in your lap?
Jamie Frederick and my wetland agent, I don't remember when we first started looking at this, but we've been, we've been working with it uh, in the background for a while now, um, so I, I'd say we had a decent amount of time to kind of set everything up. I won't bore you with every single section, but I'll just give you the quick highlights. So we've got the application and free review, this is where we're gonna do our everyday tracking, um, and updates a lot of the workflow steps for the applicant. Um, you know, we're able to track site walks, so that's something else we'll be able to do reporting on, public hearings, um, B reduction requests, interveners, peer reviews, uh, complex application fees, how many times have we required a second and third amount of money? There are gonna be things we'll be able to track, um, department reviews is internal. Uh, and then essentially, we've got the decisions, so the system will be able to spit out our permits, so our permits will look slightly different moving forward, unfortunately, the formatting is not the best, but, um, it's able to, to hold all the information, and I think it'll be nice to have it in the system, generated by the system, so it'll be very easy for the applicant, or I guess the permit holder at that point, to reference their permit moving forward. Um, and the nice thing about this system is all of these boxes don't pop up unless you check something that says it's required. So it looks like a lot, but it is only a lot when it is a lot. Um, permit compliance, fail to enter the contractor's acknowledgement information in here, so that way we can make sure we know who we're responding with and when the project is supposed to start and finish. Uh, bond information, and, um, we can enter multiple bonds in case there's cash insurity or phase one and phase two. Track all of that, know if our sureties are expiring, um, monitoring, how many reports are required, have they started? Are we expecting them to start in the near future? Um, and then denial letter I put at the very bottom, because we generally don't have a whole lot of those, and permit extension and expiration, so that if we have requests to, um, extend a permit, we can process that through the system and have that updated expiration date in the system as well.
This is Commissioner Bassman, if I wanted to, after, let's say this has been implemented for six months, um, take a look across the board and say, what's the total number of bond dollars that in fact, uh, were processed through this, is there an ability to do that?
There is, I will say, in the first six months, we probably won't have a whole lot of bond information.
Over two years, let's say, you know,
Yep, you can set timeframes for the reporting, you can set, um, criteria, so, um. Yeah, yeah, it's got a lot of flexibility as far as the reporting, so I was trying to build out the things that the commission has asked about in the past to make sure that we have that ability moving forward. It won't exist, obviously, for records that, um, are already in the system, however, I am looking into whether we can add the bond and mitigation monitoring sections to our historical records as well, because they're a different record type. Um, so that way we can input that information as relevant for those projects that haven't started yet, but that will be going on and that we'll wanna track that information for. Rather than having to put in like a duplicate record if we wanted to do that.
Jamie, Commissioner Goklowski, who is going to be the, um, hosting company of this service? Is it gonna be the town's, um, infrastructure, or is it gonna be an outside infrastructure?
You mean like where the data will be stored?
Yes.
Um, I believe it's cloud-based, but I'm not sure, um. And I know there's, there's backup redundancy requirements, I, I'm not, I'm not sure on that side.
So I'm just, uh, this is Commissioner Boda. I'm, I'm wondering if, as the chairman. Uh, mentioned earlier, some of these details can be saved for either individual conversations or, or, or feedback or. Um, a webinar type situation, um. We had such a short agenda. We've been on this item for a really long time and I, I appreciate the, the time, the effort, the work and the detail that goes into it. I, I just know that for me personally, when I'm, when I'm working in a new system, like to learn about it. And hear about it is not as helpful as like, okay, now I have to use it. If I'm not gonna use it for another month or two months, all of these details, I'm gonna just have to re-hear again.
Understood. Um, so the main point I think this evening is to get confirmation if you guys are good with the. Form part of it, which is the white boxes we went over initially. Um, very minor changes, uh, and like I said, I would recommend changing the boxes, um, in alignment with. What I have summarized here. And I would also recommend updating the paper form to align with what we're asking for online. Um, so I guess I would ask if the commission's comfortable with making that decision this evening. And then, of course, we can send out what we can send out, um, for you guys to look at in the future. Of whether you wanna do that now or closer to us going live. Um, that I, I totally get like, it's a lot. And when I don't look at it for a couple of weeks, I'm like, oh, right, what was I doing? So yeah, I don't think we have to dive into all of the weeds tonight. I just wanted to get the application form forward and. See if you guys have any feedback.
This is Commissioner Goklowski. I'm fine with the application for, you know, at this stage and then. Anything in the future, I mean, we can't really discuss anything that we don't have any concrete evidence on that right now anyway, so.
Commissioner Boda, I, I think that your changes are, are thoughtful and, and helpful. I think the, the regrouping of. The regulated activities and such. Um, you know, you're, you're working with applicants in, um, a much closer way and so I. I think that your judgment is quite sound.
You okay to move on, Jamie?
Yep.
Okay, uh, we have agent approvals. Next, anything of note there or can we move on to correspondence and announcements?
Um, pull this out of the agenda. I think everything was pretty straightforward unless the commissioner, any commissioners have questions.
Okay, item ten, correspondence and announcements.
Uh, Jamie Frederick and the wetland agent. Um, it's not added as an agenda item, so I don't wanna get into a whole lot of detail, but I do want you guys to kind of. Hear it from me rather than through the grapevine. Um, we are looking at restructuring the in the wetlands and planning and zoning departments. Into a planning, conservation and development part, department. Um, so there will be no change in, you know, the services that are being provided to the commission. Same communication, same process for the time being. Um, it might be that you're seeing some more faces from staff members. Um, you know, as we move forward with the transition. Uh, but I'm not, you know, planning on going anywhere. I'll be here, um. You know, this is definitely where my heart is. So, uh, you know, I'm not looking to, to leave, um, support for the in the wetlands and water courses commission. Um, and we're looking to, you know, kind of reassess how we can provide services for the community. And, and the permissions that the departments currently, um, assessed, so, uh. We'll be in touch with more information moving forward. They're not looking to cut any staff or anything, uh, we, uh. There's, uh, actually an extra. Part-time position in the planning and zoning budget that's not currently allocated, so we'd be looking at how to best allocate that position moving forward. In line with the restructure, so. Not cutting anything back, just shifting it around to kind of see how we can. Provide services for the community.
This is Commissioner Bassman. I think. Appreciate, I'm sure the commission appreciates the heart. Uh, we also appreciate the experience. And, you know, the brain, so the fact that you're gonna be with us, uh, for the foreseeable future and still providing. The guidance that you have is immeasurable for this commission to function.
Yeah, and Jamie Frederick and the wetland agent, if, if any of you want to reach out to me directly, um, to discuss any concerns, thoughts. Questions, you know, how to get ahold of me.
Okay, I think if I'm not mistaken, we have finished the, uh, agenda except for adjournment. Go ahead, Commissioner Boda.
I said so moved. Motion to adjourn.
I am moved as well. Good night.
Good night, everyone.
Night.